Okay, welcome everybody to the July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local channel access, uh, channel eight and through the town website at www dot eastham dash ma dot gov. I do have to ask, is anybody doing any recording in this audience, either audio or visual? Nope, okay. We have, um, a couple of things. Jim Kevlehan has decided not to renew, uh, to the planning board. And Craig Nightingale was not reappointed to the board. So, um, I would like to thank both of them for their long-term service. I mean, Craig has been on this board longer than I have, and I've been here since two thousand nine. So, um, we will miss him. And we do thank him for his service. And, uh, having said that, we will go on to our agenda. I'm gonna call case number PB two oh two four dash zero eight for seven twenty Schoolhouse Road, Ashona Map nine parcel sixty-eight A. Prabha Chevya, I hope I'm not butchering your name, is Deborah Davis, applicancy, site plan approval residential pursuant to Eastham zoning by law, section seven point four residential lot intensity and section ten point three site plan approval residential, to demolish an existing one-story dwelling and build a new two-story dwelling with attached two-car garage and second-floor accessory dwelling unit above the garage with a site cover of four thousand one hundred and, uh, square feet, which is eleven point nine percent on a lot containing twenty thousand square feet or more where the site coverage exceeds three thousand square feet. Good evening. You're up.
Good evening. My name is Herb Davis, and this is my wife, Deborah Davis. And I'd like to, uh, on the application, we need to make a little correction because when we made this application, uh, we weren't the owners of the property. So it was the seller's name that you were trying to pronounce.
Yes.
But as of, as of a week, more than a week ago now, uh, we are the owners of that lot. Okay? So, uh, thank you for, uh, taking this opportunity to listen to our application. We are looking to, to construct, uh, a two-story, two-bedroom, basically three and a half bath single-family with an attached garage like you had, uh, uh, mentioned with an ADU above. The purpose of the construction is to provide housing for my wife and I and her elderly parents whom we are caregivers for. Uh, we moved from Connecticut, uh, basically about a year and a half ago because our father, who is now ninety-two, uh, was developing dementia and it was just much too difficult for his wife to take care of him. So we closed up our home in Connecticut and we've been renting a place in Provincetown since. And it's going to be a long haul. That's what it is. So we started to look around to see where we might be able to set up home somewhere. And, uh, we've sold our home now in Connecticut. And, uh, as you can see, we are looking to move forward, you know, here and create homestead. The important part about this is that we need to construct a home that is going to allow us to care for them and care for us as we age as well. And a home to be able to do that, I, I'm a builder, by the way. I've, uh, built homes, uh, for forty years, uh, in Connecticut. This would be my first construction here in Massachusetts. Uh, and one of the primary or several of the primary things that allow us to do this is having space for mobility within, with any, any structure, you know, around beds or around cabinets or down hallways or what have you. Uh, as you become debilitated, you need to have more room. It also is important for, uh, stairways to be gentler in the rises of them where they're closer to seven inches if you can, uh, as opposed to eight inches and having a wide tread. Uh, all of these things, increasing hallways, increasing space increases the size of what your dwelling is going to be. And the ADU for us, uh, serves, you know, one important thing is that as we get older, uh, having additional income could be very important to us. So when we look at all of this, you know, together, uh, we see that we are going to, as best we can, be in compliance with all of the regulations that are required or that we have in the planning and zoning. Our lot is thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-six square feet according, uh, to the land surveyor. And that being said, a twelve percent coverage, uh, says that we have to be under four thousand one hundred and ten square feet in order to meet that requirement. So when we look at the setbacks, uh, and that are required, the massing that is, uh, that you're looking at on, on the property, uh, we see and we believe that, uh, we have worked to create a design of a home that is going to be within keeping with what the regulations are, are calling for. What we would like to do is, uh... Let me back up for a second. The property requires that, uh, we're gonna have to install a new septic system. When we decided to add the ADU, there was one particular requirement, uh, that, uh, we had a, a septic's plan that was already in place, but when we added the ADU, there's a particular requirement that requires that the, uh, tank either needs to be a two-thousand-gallon tank in a split system or two separate things. So that plan is being updated. That's what's happening at this particular time. The ability of the lot to be able to handle, uh, you know, effluent and, and, uh, being able to handle the drainage and things like that is, is not a problem. It's, it's able to do that. Fortunately, uh, Eastham and, uh, some of the other surrounding places, the, the sandy soils and stuff are, you know, and, and has incredible drainage, you know? So, uh, that's not a problem unlike places in Connecticut. As far as the topography is concerned, this lot is essentially level. It's, uh, you know, pretty much, there's a very minimal grade train, change. Sixty square, uh, I mean, uh, feet, uh, linear feet. It probably drops about seven, seven feet or so, and, uh, it's very, very gentle. And we are not, and I'll, I'd like to go over this and we can discuss this as far as what's going to happen in terms of the, uh, the, you know, the vegetation and things that are there. The lot is nicely cleared for the most part around where the construction is. There's, uh, very little things. There's some trees that have encroached on the dwelling itself, but...
Mostly saplings.
Yeah, but that's because the house has been vacant for years. And so therefore, things have sprouted up on the property. But mature, um, you know, healthy, uh, you know, trees that are around are pretty much to the periphery and in the front yard. So, uh, i- it's an ideal situation. There isn't a lot of, there isn't any heavy clearing that we have to do, you know, for this except for the structure itself and a few, and a few trees that are around. So...
Well, I'm just gonna say, we will be taking out any of the invasive species and, um, anything that is brand-new because it's too much competition for the healthier trees.
So I would, um, having said that, I, I would, uh, like to entertain any questions that you have.
Okay.
Okay? Oh, I should, should I, I should also explain why you received a new set of plans. Okay? The reason you set, uh, received this new set of plans was primarily regarding the health department. When Susan spoke with me, uh, and she said, "Well, this is what my, my, my sense is, is that, uh, the real issue is that, am I, can I deem this as a four-bedroom or is it a three-bedroom?" And so she told me, um, why it was going to be, look at it as a four-bedroom, and that was because of the office that we had on the second floor. And, um, we aren't intending on having another bedroom. That's not an issue for us, but if that structure and the way that it was structured was gonna cause a problem, so we decided to change it. So we created an opening, uh, in the wall, basically making that one open area up there, uh, and, um, you know, took the door off to the catwalk, I don't, if you've had a chance to take a look at it. So it just created an open area that was upstairs, so it eliminated the concern for it becoming or, or being deemed as a four-bedroom. So it is a three-bedroom that includes the ADU. So it, it, it meets the requirements for that. Okay? The other changes that were on there are actually sort of, uh, uh, minor from a standpoint of view, but I, when I spoke with Paul, uh, I had originally wanted a walk-up basement entry and, uh, because it's a nicer way to get into the basement and because I'm a contractor, that's where I wanted to come up and down with my stuff. He said that it had to be included. Uh, my interpretation of it was because it wasn't habitable space, there wasn't a floor that was to that area, it led to the basement and the like, I thought that I could subtract off that entryway because it was distinct and very separate. It wasn't connected to anything in the house. It was, you enter in from the outside and you go downstairs. But he said he had to. So I, I changed it on this plan that you have now to it be in, uh, you know, a bulkhead door, you know?
Which means that he's gonna have to duck every time he goes down the stairs.
And, uh...
I won't. I won't have to duck.
The other addition that was on here is the chimney. There's a chimney that, uh, uh, we put on. Instead of having a direct vent going out, we changed it to having a chimney that goes up above the roof. And those are the changes why the, that, that new set was given to you.
Okay. As you pointed out, this lot does not lend itself to walkout basement. Your, your front elevation is ninety-eight, your rear is ninety-four. You're not gonna walk out of, from a basement on this property. So you're gonna need a bulkhead or a bilico door or something to go down in. There will be some waivers that this board has to entertain if we're proceeding with this. We do have a requirement for a landscape plan. Either we, the applicant is supposed to supply one or we have the right to waive it. Then we do also require a lighting plan, um, so we have to talk about that. The lot is very private, obviously. If you've been there, you know that. Um, so in terms of affecting the neighbors, I agree with the applicant. It's pretty much centered in this, in the middle of the lot. So there're not gonna be a lot of issues with regard to the neighbors. But I will open it up at this time to questions from the board members, so I'll start with Brian.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Michelle?
Um, yeah, so I think it's obviously very generous of you to, you know, build on behalf of, you know, a larger family community, so I wanna acknowledge that. I, I do wanna say that, um, the septic issues here are real. You know, I mean, you're new-ish, you know, to the community and while opening it up and not making it a bedroom, and I know we're just looking at the site, but I just wanna say that the number of people that sleep there and use, uh, the restrooms have an impact on our environment, so I just wanna make that note. Um, also, the street, where it is exactly on Schoolhouse Road, um, I know I drove past it a couple of times and had to turn around, and so it's, the visibility there is difficult, so I think in whatever clearing plan, and thanks for the additional information here, uh, the sight lines are gonna be important, getting in and out of, uh, the driveway because it, it appears to be a bit dangerous coming around that corner. And it also looks like you've added space for K-turn in front.
Yes.
Right. So that was my question. And then, um, yeah, the perimeter vegetation, this is a much larger structure, and obviously that structure has been vacant, so whoever the abutters are have not been used to having anybody there, period. And now we're doubling plus the size of the structure. So I do think, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I would actually like to see, uh, a landscape plan.
Okay.
That's it.
Dave?
So for, uh, that's kinda like my department.
Okay.
Um, so what do you need for that? Because I don't know what I'm gonna put there. I'm, I'm planning on doing flowers around the house and flowers around the edge of the, the woods that are, um...
Indigenous.
Indigenous to the area and will be able to be supported by the environment without having to do a lot of watering. And I was gonna put, um, flowering bushes between us and the neighbors so that there would be screening and visi- visible, but visibility and then...
Well, in, in my opinion, the, the primary goal would be the privacy, um, issues.
That's my goal, too.
Exactly. And, and lighting, right? So between, if you've got downlighting and then you've got, um, screening-type vegetation that helps protect, um, the properties from each other, that, that's what...
That's the plan going around. So you just want like a written narrative or is there a physical form, I draw a picture on or something?
No, I did, I did a written narrative, but on the site plan that's here, this, this property is extensively wooded.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you know? It's, it, as a matter of fact, it's, it's incredibly private as far as I can see. When you look at the landscape, uh, the, uh, site plan that is here, if you see the margin of the, uh, he put a, a clouded kind of, uh, area that's around here, I have, uh, I have a video of the property that I could show you that really, that really tells you. I mean, you can barely see anybody through there because of how heavily wooded the place is and, and...
What now? You know? And then this structure, you know, goes up, right? So I think that's, you know, there's, we're trying to look at what will this be like, you know, moving forward.
Understood. Understood.
Dave?
Um, are your parents gonna live in the ADU at the time?
No. No, they're, they're on the first floor.
Yeah.
Oh, they're gonna be on the first floor? Okay.
And the, and the, um, if worst comes to worst, the ADU could provide space for a, um, caregiver, a nurse, somebody like that.
Rented.
When you have an ADU, doesn't it have to be rented?
No, we would be renting it to them, but it'd be a place for them to stay.
Paul? For an ADU, is there a requirement that it be rented? Yeah?
The ADU has to be either owner-occupied or a year-round rental. And the bylaw has the flexibility that, that either the ADU or the principal dwelling, one of those has to be a year-round rental or on, or, or owner-occupied. And that could switch over time, so we built that flexibility into it.
Well, I think the applicant has indicated they're gonna live on the...
The house part.
The main?
The main house part.
Right.
And you're going to rent the ADU?
Mm-hmm.
And that will be subject to a year-round lease?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Do, does...
The.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, could you just say that again? I just wanna make sure I followed that.
We're staying in the house part. The ADU will be rented with a year-round lease.
Yeah, that, that's...
That's, that's what's required of it. That's the reason that we're doing it.
No argument. I'm just clarifying it.
No, no, I was saying, that's, yeah, that's, that's what was required. I don't, uh...
Yeah, and there's...
We understand that. Yeah.
Yeah, that, and the, um, there's conditions to that effect in the staff report referencing the zoning by law.
Thank you for explaining your, your intentions on the house. It's, again, kudos to you for, uh, taking care of parents, um, design all around that. I think it's great. Unfortunately, it leaves me conflicted on one point. The size of the house is something I'm always very sensitive to. The, um, certainly in terms of car, site coverage, you are just within what's allowed, so no issues with that specifically. But one of the things we also have to look at here as a board is what that does to the neighborhood. Is it a reflection of the characteristics of the rest of the neighborhood? Um, a couple of months ago, we had sort of a quick preview of the project and, you know, we, we certainly were not surprised tonight with the size of the house. We knew that was gonna be there. One bit of information we didn't have at that time was simply a, a survey of the neighborhood to see how big the lots are, how big the houses are that are on those lots within the neighborhood and see how well that, that fits. At forty-one hundred square feet, you're way above everything else in the neighborhood. From the info we had gotten here, uh, I think it's seven sixty-five Schoolhouse, uh, the living space is thirty-one hundred square feet. Pretty much everything there, the rest of the neighborhood, is two thousand square feet or less, so what really stands out, um, certainly with the heavy landscaping and so forth that's there, and I went there this morning and I, I was going slowly because I knew it was, the number was coming up. Uh, I didn't go past it, but darn near did, um, and pulled into the lot, and clearly it's thick with, with growth. And for anyone driving by, you're probably not going to see much of it because of that, uh, which is certainly something to, to consider. But I guess the long-term concern I have is that when you have a neighborhood of considerably smaller houses, whatever characteristics that neighborhood has, how people get along and so forth, um, to put in a house that's exceptionally larger, uh, over time has the risk of changing the character of the neighborhood and that anyone else with large lots, and there are some good-sized lots in there in the neighborhood, um, they may get the same idea to go to the max and build a four, you know, four thousand square-foot house or whatever, and over a period of two years, five years, or whatever, suddenly the, the tenor of the neighborhood is completely different. So I get to be kinda sensitive with that. On the other side, on the other hand, um, what you're trying to do makes perfect sense. But I'm just conflicted right now on that, and I don't know, um, how much time was spent with the architects. Certainly it's a nice design. I don't know what flexibility there is in there to tweak it and somehow kinda get the, the size down a bit. Um, if only, and again, the reason I do that is I look ahead to the future and other lots in the neighborhood over time, what that does to the neighborhood.
True.
You know, over an extended period of time, it's a totally different place sometimes, and that's one of the risks that we, we run. And it's our call based on the bylaws and so forth that, uh, we have to consider the characteristics very strongly in size and massing and all that kind of thing is, is, comes into that. So, uh, my hat's off to you. It looks like a good project, but I honestly am conflicted right now because of the size component.
Understood.
Peter?
No problem with the lot. It's, um, bigger, but every house that gets built is a little bigger than the surrounding houses.
Okay.
The trend on the case.
Right. I'd, I'd like to point out that the, the footprint of the house is twenty-four hundred and some square feet. And by the way that coverage, you know, it's done, the coverage is done in different municipalities, different states, different ways. Uh, this one considers the s- square footage of every floor, uh, as it's, as it's going up, which is okay. So if we took out six hundred and some square feet of...
You're missing half the floor.
The garage, no, of the, of the garage, right? If we remove the garage, we're down to, you know, thirty-four hundred, right? If we, uh, remove the ADU, oh, now we're down below three thousand, you know? And, uh, but we're also trying to consider what we're doing in terms of our lives and how we move forward. And, uh, you know, you, you plan for what you can rather than saying, "Well, I'll sort of wing it as I go along." And, uh, that's, that's what you're seeing here being reflected in this.
This is typical of every application we have going forward. We're balancing the rights of the property owner versus characteristics of the neighborhood. Happens every time, it's gonna happen, every application going forward. And our job is to decide what's right. From a technical standpoint, you need four out of seven votes.
Okay.
Six.
For approval, right? But we only have six. So you still need four. So, um, I'm just telling you, uh, one of our members is not here tonight, so, um, you do need four for residential, not for commercial, but for residential, you need four out of seven. But having said that, um, why don't we push this off for a while and let the, anybody in the audience speak on this application? Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Please come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
We can't really go on with that. The health is going on.
They've already got Board of Health.
They have Board of Health.
I thought it was, something was being redone.
Yeah, hold on, just as a point of clarification before you start. Board of Health told you you needed to have a two-thousand-gallon tank. Have you produced the plan that ha- that has the two-thousand-gallon tank yet?
Uh, no, the, uh, Schofield, uh, Laura over there is in the process of doing that. She's, she's...
We can do it subjectively.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Hi, um, my name's Emily Beebe. I live at seven hundred and fifty Schoolhouse Road, and I wanted to bring up a couple of points, and I thank you for your good process, uh, this evening. A comment that I've heard a couple of times and, uh, including from, uh, Herb and Deborah is about the amount of vegetation on the lot, which is true, there's quite a bit of it, and most of it is between the existing cottage and the street. There's very sparse vegetation on the, I think that's the north side, definitely, um, thin on, on Scott's side, and I think ours is thicker, but it's not as dense as we would prefer. Uh, and it will be a very big difference to all of our lives. I think part of it is the height of the building and because, you know, everything is so flat in there, relatively even, this house is gonna look down on everybody else's house. With that in mind, I wanted to inquire about the criteria for down-shielded lights and how that works. We have other neighbors that don't have down-shielded lights, and they literally pier- pierce your house, you know, experience. So if they have down-shielded lights, but they're on the second-story balconies that are looking into our house, I think that would be pretty detrimental to our, um, you know, I don't know what we would do to mitigate that, so I'm asking if that could be addressed somehow with the lighting plan. So that's my first thing. My second thing is to, um, no, that's my third, that's my second thing. My third thing is, um, we're beekeepers and we're really, um, happy about, um, hearing the values about, um, you know, native species and that sort of thing, but we also are wondering if there's some, um, mechanism that the planning board might be able to assist us with relative to use of pesticides.
We don't, we don't...
It is, I'm sorry. It's so common for folks to use, um, mosquito mary, um, mosquito squad to get to ticks and to do the adulticide, and we're, we are, we, we understand that this is not an effective way to manage a local environment and would encourage you to consider that in your conditioning. The almost last thing is that we would like, if it's possible, since I know that there's gonna be a landscape layer added to this, if it's possible to take a look at the stakes outlining the future, um, footprint of the house relative to the landscaping, which I think might inform the landscape plan. So I just wanted to ask you for, to consider that. And last but not least is, is just the whole concept here that I'm, um, I want to just reinforce, and it's not so much about Herb and Deborah's application, necessarily. And it's not so much about Herb and Deborah's application necessarily as I think about the way that the bylaws are structured, but I'd like you to take it into consideration. And that's that there are, there are ceilings of all these values for, uh, for, you know, building a house or adding, taking down a house and putting in a new house. You have lot coverage, you have height, you have, you know. These things have maximum levels and this particular property application is pushed up to the, just below on all of those. And that, to me, seems to defeat the idea of having all of these limits. If the limits were made as, well, we could live with this, then we're living with the absolute biggest without any sort of criteria to help us mitigate some of the other issues such as the massing. It's just a, it's just a lot in a small area. I appreciate the small area because it, it really, it will, I think, be better in the long run. And I'm going to wind that up right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward.
Scott Brookshire, seven-ten Schoolhouse. About the vegetation, um, I had to put up a fence, sort of, on my property line because I was tired of looking at all of the stuff that was on, you know, their property now. They're going to get rid of it because the trees are only screened for like, when they're green. And in the fall, it was like a clear shot of every pile of stuff on their property. And when I was sitting there eating dinner and looking out the window, it's just like I've had it. So, I put up some posts and I put up some slats and put up a very inexpensive, but according to bylaws, a legal fence. Because the visibility is, you know, it's there. You can see everything, so, you know, I'm just. And I know the previous, previous owner, Bezilge, he inherited from his father, I believe, he cleared up to the line, a lot of my line and into my property while Jim Owens owned the house. So, you know, I mean, so, there's sort of like, there's six-foot buffer in some spots and not in other spots. And then when the fall, leaves fall off the trees, it's like, hello, there you are, you know? So, that's what I'm concerned about, you know? And the light, but mostly, you know, just the privacy. That's all, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, so I'm Jill Brookshire at seven-ten Schoolhouse, I'm Scott's wife. I guess also too, that driveway, um, somebody commented about that being such a tricky spot. I actually got into a little bit of an accident a couple of years ago getting out of my driveway because the high school students and the staff just drive like crazy on that road. And it is a very tricky corner. So, I'm just curious too about the use of the driveway, like people coming and going, how, like, i, i, if there's anything else, especially construction, or if there's another business, you know, anything else happening in the property that's going to cause for traffic, you know, for comings and goings because we have the property right next door, Maureen's property that has the driveway, our property with our driveway and then that, your property with that driveway and meeting house and the corner. And we all knew that this, we're, we're okay with the house being torn down, that's for sure because you knew it was, you knew it was going to happen. So, that, you know, just again, just keeping in light of the neighborhood, it's such a lovely neighborhood. Really nice people live there. It, it's just a nice, quiet, family neighborhood and really hoping that it stays that way, that this is not, and, I mean, you look, and I'm so sorry, but you look at the plans and it looks like a spec house that's going to sell in a couple of years and Delmar's going to move in and start like regular seasonal rentals in it and it's going to be packed with like lots of people using the three-and-a-half bathrooms in the main house plus the one in the dwelling unit. So, it's just, it's, it's a little bit like unnerving that way too. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Anybody else, please? Okay, we'll, we'll get to you on the screen.
Hi, Maureen Leavenworth. I represent six-eighty Schoolhouse Road, six-ninety Schoolhouse Road. I guess my biggest concern is the lighting. I've seen other houses even along Schoolhouse Road or, and everywhere where the lighting just casts down on you and suddenly you're living under a spotlight that you didn't even put up. It changes the breadth of how you live as a person, as a family. I just really want to reiterate that portion of it. Also, keeping as much buffer as possible along the roadside and the thickness, not just six feet, just make it as natural as possible. And also, the two-thousand gallon tank that needs to go in. You know, looking at the plot plan, um, it's right now how it's sitting, it looks like it's right on the edge of the lot, five feet away from the lot line. So, if that twenty, whatever it is, two-thousand square foot tank goes in, is there room? Or does it have to now be projected to the front? And there's plenty of land going out front. Just another thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? We have somebody on screen that has their sign up. It's W H J E N, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Please give your name and address.
Linda Potash, six-twenty-five Schoolhouse Road, Eastham.
Go ahead.
I'm not feeling well, can I have my daughter, uh, read my message to you, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, this is, uh, Val Decker, a, a letter to planning board members. Uh, over fifty years ago, my husband David Potash and I scraped together enough money to pay for what we hoped to be our dream retirement home. At that time, the area was mostly undeveloped with a lot of open space and dirt roads. When we purchased the lot, we expected the zoning logs to protect us from commercial development and gross changes of the topography and adjacent properties. We saved for many years until we could build. In May twenty-twenty-two, Eastham Planning Board reviewed, reviewed a proposal for the development of a plot on Shertlift Road. The board appears to have been unable to visualize the final development based on drawings despite protests by my niece, Sarah Reynolds. Standards for site plan review state that the development shall relate harmoniously to the terrain, scale and proportions of existing buildings in the neighborhood. The development should be in harmony with prevailing character, height, scale of other buildings in the neighborhood. That property in Shertlift is now a three-story megalith. Opulent garages, pools and accessory buildings are supported by giant boulders mocking all zoning bylaws. The planning board should revisit that site, not only to gaze upward at the three-story building, but listen to the two oversized cooling systems placed on the property boundary to reduce noise to the owners at the Reginald, the Reynolds expense. The giant boulder retaining walls and denuded property are an affront to anyone who loves the Cape. The property at six-twenty-five Schoolhouse Road and its abutters were so damaged by the town's failure to enforce its own bylaws for the parcel behind it that one abutter sold the lot next door to ours. This sale occurred almost immediately after the lot, two parcels down, was converted into a rental property with a commercial sign out front. Now, the town of Eastham is considering another proposal to skirt all existing site regulations and erect a large home with a two-story accessory building with a dwelling unit in what was never intended to be a commercial street crammed with parked cars owned by people with no interest in the community. If this precedent is allowed, our property could be further devalued by whatever oversized investment property the town planning board allows on the undeveloped lot immediately next to ours. Contractors in Eastham have abused the use of boulder retaining walls creating isol, drainage problems and structural instabilities. The elimination of the natural and characteristic topography of the area to allow for excessive site coverage is at the expense of abutters who believe zoning laws would protect the charm and natural appeal of Cape Cod. My family has already suffered enough damage from the type of variance now before the board in case number twenty-four-eight, seven-twenty Schoolhouse Road. I respectfully request the planning board reject the proposal outright as an excessive and unjustified variance to all past and present zoning ordinances. Respectfully submitted, Linda A. Potash, trustee.
Thanks, thank you.
Yes, and that, uh, letter was mailed, uh, to Mr. Lag earlier today, emailed. And I'd like that to be submitted for the record, please.
It will be.
Thank you.
Okay, um, board members, it seems to me we have a bunch of issues there. One of which I'm very concerned, which is the line of sight for the driveway. I was out there today and, uh, I am going to suggest that the applicant can't do much to the south the way the existing driveway is. I'm going to ask him to look at relocating that to the center of the lot. You can take the sketch with you and take a look at it. You don't have the ability within your property to create a proper line of sight to the south. So, what I'm going to ask you to do is study the line of sight and if necessary, move it to the center of the lot where you have the right to clear in order to create the line of sight that you need for, for proper access.
I, I didn't really want to clear the woods.
What's that?
I, I didn't really want to clear the woods, I wanted.
No, I'm not asking you to clear the woods. I'm just asking you to do it within the right-of-way so that the car coming out doesn't get smashed. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for twenty feet into the lot. What I'm asking for is a proper line of sight for a safe access.
Oh, just making it wider, the exit.
And clearing some vegetation along the right-of-way. You don't have the ability to clear to the south because you don't own the land. You do have the ability to create line of sight within the center of the lot. So, I'm going to, I'm asking you to look at it. It seems to me that we have enough issues here, um, especially with the concern of the neighbors and especially concerned with the size of the lot, uh, the house, that, and since you're in the business, maybe a landscape plan is appropriate. So, I'm going to, as first step, poll the board and see if we feel.
I'm sorry, what did you mean when you said, since you're in the business?
I thought you had expertise in.
No, 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 I'm a, I'm an environmental science teacher.
Okay.
So.
So, I, I correct myself.
I get to pick the flowers and the trees and the bushes.
So, if you want to pick the flowers, the trees and the bushes and put them on a plan, you can do it yourself. You don't have to necessarily hire a professional landscape architect. But bear in mind, what we're trying to do is screen this large building from the neighbors. And I think that's important, it's just my personal opinion. So, I'm going to poll the board and ask, do we want to, we do have the right to require, do we want to require a landscape plan that protects the neighbors' interests on this site? Brian?
I would say a landscaping plan is, um, and also the size of the house, you know, and, and this is what, uh, the, the chairman spoke to earlier, we're always, we're always wrestling with this, um, with these kinds of issues. But the size is, is a concern to me and then the traffic going in and out. Um, I was over there as well today. So, I, a landscaping plan and, um, you know, just look at it, you know?
Michelle?
Uh, yeah, I would, um, request both a landscaping and a lighting plan.
Dave?
I agree with both of those. I did see in here that you had downshielded lighting, which will help. Now, I don't know about on the second floor. I'm not sure how that affects.
It's just going to go on the first floor, it's all you need, like to get in the driveway and stuff.
Okay. I did see that was downshielded, so that takes care of some of the problems.
Kevin?
Uh, definitely a landscaping plan.
Peter?
Well, I would agree with the landscaping plan.
Okay, um.
But nothing else.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, so, there was a spec sheet for the lighting provided. It does, uh, provide for downshielded, it does have a fully enclosed fixture.
The location of those are shown on A five.
Yeah, it does show, and I guess just to clarify, it does show that there's some outside on the second floor because you need, you need it for the entryway anyways.
For the entry doors.
So, that's required by code, but the lighting spec does show a.
There's no spotlights, there's no anything like that or.
So, it does show that, um, just in terms of a lighting plan, the board, um, certainly can request a full lighting plan. It's not something that, to be honest, is usually done for on the, on the residential.
I agree with you.
We usually leave it at, at fully shielded. And that's all, and that's a standing condition anyways, but it's still, you know, it's, whether the board wants a full lighting plan or just more information on the lighting, the placement, that's, you know, up to the board.
Can we make it a, one of the conditions that no light spillage be observed on any adjoining property?
Yeah, we could.
I have no, I have no problem with that. Yeah, I have no problem with that at all.
All right, we'll do that.
And our, our lights are shown on the plans.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
No, I totally, I totally agree with you.
I'm saying they are shown on the plans and they're, they are there.
I totally agree with you. They are shown on the plan. So, um.
Oh, sorry, I just, so I, it seems like the board's heading towards a continuance with a request for a landscape plan. I just, if there's anything else, we should just kind of have the list of anything that you want follow-up on, just kind of, so we can expedite things, make sure we're not missing anything. I don't know, and I don't know if there's any items that came up in the abutting, the abutters' comments.
Well, I wrote, I wrote them down, basically, um, the landscaping plan that you do create should consider year-round screening, evergreen screening in some sorts. Because, uh, to have a nice maple tree in the middle of winter isn't going to give you the protection that the neighbors are looking for, so you might want to consider something in the evergreen species. And, yes.
One request was the stakes outlining the new footprint, is that, um, possible to do such?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If you stake out the property in advance of our next meeting and if we have the landscape plan in advance of the next meeting, it would be extremely helpful to see visually on the site how the landscape plan is going to protect the neighbors. So, I don't know if that's possible to do, but I think it would be appropriate. Okay, well, um, so, we have a meeting in a month. Is there a submission date, Angie, that they would have to get this in prior?
July twenty-first for August.
So, if I, um, if I was to interpret this about what we're saying as far as a landscape plan and further screening, and the idea of doing evergreens is that, um, where there is, there's currently trees that are going along, let's say Scott's property, right, to the rear, that we would plant, um, evergreens, that's what we're saying, we're going to.
You want pine trees there?
We'll plant pine trees there and, and go along and then along his driveway on the west side here, we'll plant additional evergreens as part of a landscape plan?
What we're looking for, without dictating to you what type of plants you can and can't do, is year-round visual protection to the neighbors, that's it. So, it's up to you how you want to do that.
I, I, I under, I understand.
In other words, something that isn't going to lose all its leaves and create no buffering, that's all. We need something better than that. And it, you, you might do dogwoods, you might, who knows? You know, lots of different things you could do.
I, I was just using the evergreens as an example of something, yeah, I understand.
Something that will survive and, and last through the winter because it is tough in the wintertime, um, if all, if all the vegetation is bare, what have you accomplished in terms of screening of the large house? And I think the neighbors have a proper concern that this is one of the larger houses in the neighborhood and we're trying to mitigate it as much as possible.
What is the change of the next?
The, the bu.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The, uh, the bylaw requires at least fifty percent of the, um, plantings be native and appropriate. And I know, obviously, you said you have a strong interest in having everything, so, if it's a hundred percent all native, appropriate, all the better, but the minimum is fifty percent and it's really, the intention is to have with these bufferings, a mix of species so it's naturalized. So, I guess just to get to, you know, the evergreens are important for the screening, the year-round. Doesn't necessarily mean you have to put a row of all the same thing, so, there is some. So there is some, you know, latitude as far as what, you know, you want to have in there. It's just a naturalized buffer is really what the goal is.
When you say plantings, you mean anything new that goes in? Not the stuff that exists?
Yeah, so I guess as you're thinking about this, putting this landscape plan together, the more native species, the better, but you have to have at least 50% just for the bylaw. And again, just mixing and matching so you get an effective screening, but something also that, you know, is to your own liking, too. There's discretion you can have in there, just...
Can I show the property just for a second so that we can have just a little bit more discretion?
Do you know when the date is for the next meeting?
It's August 24th, and if we could just get new materials updated by August 10th.
Are you sure it's August 24th? Because I've got that as being a Saturday.
I might be looking at the wrong... August 20, sorry, I had July. August 21st is the third Wednesday.
So if we could get the revised...
August 7th.
Plans, landscape plan. Did you want to see Chair Copelman, the driveway redrawn?
What I'm suggesting on the driveway is if you could have your engineer just quickly check the line of sight. It's a 30 mile per hour road. I believe there's roughly a 100 and 150-foot line of sight required at that speed. And just have him show it on the plan. If he can make it where the driveway is now, fine. If he can't, push it up into the center of the lot to make it that way. I don't want to tell you how to do it, I just want to tell you what we want.
Understood.
Okay.
It's, like I said, our driveway is right next to Scott's driveway.
That's correct.
As it is, so the change would be to try to space it away from his driveway. But that's not what the criterion is.
That is not the criteria.
It's about safety.
There's also another criteria where you really don't wish to have a driveway across the street from a town road, and it is very close to Massasoit.
Meeting House.
No, Meeting House.
Meeting House, yeah.
So therefore, offsetting that isn't a bad idea either. Yes, sir?
May I just say that 30 miles per hour is wishful thinking?
I agree with you.
It's not the high school.
8:30 in the morning when the kids are going to school, and the teachers and the parents, and then on the reverse at 2:30 when they're leaving. It's leaving my driveway, you look left, you look right, you look left, you look right, and something's changing. It's pretty bad.
The nature of the beast.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Paul?
I would say, just to give you as much direction as helpful, the landscape plan doesn't have to be professionally done. You can do it on your own, but as long as we have adequate information. So I would recommend if you're going to do it yourself, use the plot plan that you have, so it's something to scale. Give us a list of the species, like, the species, the amount, cite the locations on the site plan, and the list. And again, just verifying if they're native or not. And there was something else I was going to mention. Staking out of the building footprint, alteration of the driveway. Does that cover everything? The next meeting is August 21st. Usually for a continued hearing, if we can get any revised information within two weeks. So that would be, if we could have something in by August 7th, that gives us time to review it and let the board have it and go back out to the site and so forth. So if you think that is viable...
It is, yes.
It is.
And then, is there anything else that the board wants to cover?
The only other thing I will tell you, because I have to put my professional engineer's hat on, take the engineer's license off the plan if you're going to modify it. You're not allowed to change a professional engineer's plan. So remove his seal and signature, and then you can do what you want. Okay? So would you like to request a continuation to our August meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to request a continuation to your August meeting.
So is there a motion to continue case number PB 2024-08 to a regularly scheduled August meeting of 8/21/2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Yeah, let's do that.
I so moved.
All right. Peter made it. Dave seconded. Correct? Okay. All in favor? Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll see you next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't throw it away now. Okay. Moving right along. Okay, I'm going to call case number PB 2024-09 for 150 Silver Springs Beach Road. As shown on map four, parcel 489, Gary McGrath applicant seeks site plan approval residential pursuant to Eastham zoning bylaw section 7.4, residential lot intensity in section 10.3, site plan approval residential, to demolish an existing one-story dwelling and build a new two-story dwelling with site coverage of 1,528 square feet, which is 15.3% on a lot containing under 10,000 square feet where the site coverage ratio for a new dwelling causes the site coverage ratio to be equal to or greater than 15% of the lot area. Please come forward.
Hi.
Hello. So we've visited, I'm sure board members have visited your site. You have a rather elderly dwelling, shall we say, sitting there. And you have an application before us to expand or tear it down and build a new structure, which is not unusual. You want to just do an overview description of the project, and then we'll take it from there?
Okay. My name is Bill Lassiter. I am Gary and Gabrielle's brother-in-law, and this is Gabrielle McGrath, Gary's wife. The kind of an overall summary, they have an existing 450-square-foot cottage that was built in 1948, '49, non-insulated, ready to, ready, well, they considered upgrading that cottage, but it just wasn't feasible. It needs new foundations, needs new wiring, needs new plumbing. And so we began to look at it from the standpoint of replacing that cottage with a new building. Their interest is to have this property as their retirement home. The, we, you know, went to the regulations to try to establish from the beginning what the parameters were for construction on the site. Had surveys done, established the area, the footprint of the building that would be allowable. There is an existing septic tank system that has been inspected, and the health department has approved the reuse of this existing septic tank system. The new dwelling will be a one-bedroom home with the living space primarily on the first floor. It will have a loft area on the second floor overlooking the living room area of the first floor. The existing building that is being demolished has a similar arrangement, has a loft area overlooking the living area of the existing building. We are going to have one full bath upstairs, one full bath on the main level. And I'm assuming you do, you have floor plans and elevations, right? Okay, so obviously, any questions you would have about the design or so forth, we'd be glad to answer. We got the package from the planning board staff report and reviewed their comments and didn't see anything particularly that we objected to. But you may have more questions about some of the issues that were discussed. I will point out that in this neighborhood, there's a variety of house size and a variety of lot sizes. And Gary and Gabrielle happen to have one of the smallest lots in the near neighborhood anyway, within the area, you know, that was clouded for the impacted properties. And yet, some, a couple of the biggest houses in the neighborhood are like two or three houses down from them. So in designing the property, we certainly kept in mind the, how it would fit into the neighborhood. It's a traditionally styled, shingled, sided house with dormers, shed dormer on the front. It looks, from the street, like a story and a half house. And I will mention, there was a shed building on the property about 10 foot by 10 foot, but Mother Nature took that away last fall. So it's no longer there. So that reduced the coverage. So that's kind of a quick summary. Be glad to answer any questions you might have about it.
Sure. Curiosity, you say there's going to be a full bath on the main level and a full bath in the loft area, and yet it's a one-bedroom house?
That's correct.
So how does that work?
Well, the footprint of the house, the buildable area of the lot is so restrained that in order to have the rooms on the first floor the size that were comfortable for them, we decided it was best to put the extra bath upstairs. The house, the living room, dining room, kitchen area is basically wide-open space inside the house with a loft overlooking it. The other bathroom, and actually, I've told you wrong, it's more than two bathrooms. There's a...
Two and a half.
Two and a half, right. There's a powder room by the front door, and then the master bedroom, principal bedroom, is on the main floor with an en suite bath.
And no tub upstairs, just...
And upstairs is a toilet, lavatory, shower. And we had discussed that the loft area is probably where the grandkids would be sent, you know, when the family was gathering for family gatherings there. And we thought it would be advantageous to have a second bath up there. So it was kind of a combination of facts. Adventages to have it up there, but also, that was where I could get more space.
Okay, Paul, has Board of Health opined on this layout being a one-bedroom?
You do have a staff report from the Board of Health in your packet.
Right.
And I believe there was a decision letter. I'm so new at how they report this, but it has gone through the board.
So Board of Health has allegedly blessed this as a one-bedroom house?
Yes.
Do they know that the upstairs is going to be used as a bedroom?
It's not, it's a loft. It's a storage place. It's, if my daughter comes...
Grandkids are going to go up there to sleep.
I don't have any grandkids right now. I'm going to be 70, but maybe if they do come, they have a place to go to sleep. I'm going to be 70, it's a retirement home. It's just my husband and I.
The loft has no privacy.
It's all wide open.
And according to...
So no one's going to sleep there?
Correct, but if somebody does come and I have to put them on a couch, maybe, or something...
I'm just not sure the Board of Health really knows that the second floor is going to be used as a bedroom.
I spoke to Susan about it.
I'm sorry, Paul?
The way it works is the Board of Health regulations have definitions for what constitutes a bedroom in design. And this loft area does not constitute a bedroom. It doesn't go beyond that. We don't regulate the use of the site. We regulate the design, the configuration, but not the use.
Okay.
You can't see their letter provided?
Yeah, I showed it.
I thought. I did see it. I'm just a little surprised, but I guess at my age...
It says the loft on the second floor not to be used as a bedroom does not meet Eastham Board of Health definition of a bedroom.
So there is a condition in there, but that's really, that is trying to address the potential use of it, but...
We could also condition our approval that it's not being used, the second floor is not being used as a bedroom theoretically. We have the right to put a condition in there.
2A.
Okay, Brian?
Well, I'm just kind of, you know, puzzling this out. On 2A of the letter, it says the loft on the second floor will not be used as a bedroom, does not meet Eastham Board of Health definition of a bedroom, but other than that. We're fucked.
Anything else, Brian?
No, I think that's it.
Michelle?
Yeah, I think we have some of the same questions, or I do, anyway, the case prior on the lighting plan, obviously. Yeah, two houses down, there's a very large home, you know, and then there's different sizes coming down. So we've now got a two-story home. There's some concerns, I believe, for neighbor privacy. So is there, and I didn't see it, is there a lighting plan?
No, there is not a lighting plan, but we certainly understand the concerns about the lighting. The, you know, the existing building, the ridge line of the existing building is about the same height as the ridge line of the proposed building. They both have some area above the first floor, but they're loft areas. The lighting, I think it's very reasonable for us to provide a lighting plan. We originally had thought that we would not have to go for site plan review because the square footage was below the 15% limit that then kicked us into site plan review. But we ended up going up above that 15% slightly.
Okay. Second question, turnaround space in the driveway? I had to pull into the neighbor's yard to get turned around so I could get out. You know, I see you have two gravel drives that kind of deadhead at the end. What were you thinking of there?
There's enough room to turn around easily.
There is?
Yes, plenty of room.
Okay.
I just want to note that the proposed new driveway wasn't shown on the site plan, and we did request in our staff report that those were shown, the new...
It's included, sorry, Angela.
How it is.
I was going to, oh, sorry.
Just the existing seems to be shown, but you describe a wraparound to...
The, on the site sheet number S1, the drives, the proposed drives and parking spots and the existing parking spot are shown, and those, the proposed turnaround and parking spots are essentially in the same places on the site. The survey did not have it on. You may be thinking of the survey that did not show that.
That was the, sorry, Mr. Chair, that was the point I was going to make. It's on the, one of the architectural sheets, but we would need it to be updated on the actual survey.
That was my question.
Yeah.
No further questions.
Dave?
I don't have many. I am a little concerned about the size of the whole project versus... I, I am a little concerned about the size of the whole project versus the neighborhood. I realize there's a couple of houses that are good size in that area, but there's also a lot of houses that are much, much smaller.
I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt or anything, but I don't, my house is the smallest house in the whole neighborhood.
Oh, I agree.
There's no house that's under five hundred square feet.
I'm not talking about the present house. I'm talking about the-
I'm just talking about all the other houses are bigger and they go up and, you know, I, I don't see any houses smaller than mine.
He's, he's talking about the what we're proposing, though.
Oh, okay.
Not your present house?
No.
That is extremely small.
I didn't have a closet.
No, it's extremely small.
Twenty-six years, I don't have a closet.
But I'm just talking about the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, and believe me, I'm staying with that because I like design. I want to keep it old paint car with the white shingles. And it'll be done very tastefully with roses and hydrangeas. I have all my plans. And it'll be very tastefully done.
She brought historic pictures of the house with the roses.
And I had it for twenty-six years. You'll see it when I had it and what I, what it looks like now. And I get compliments every day going, people going down the street. Just a cute little cottage.
Kevin?
Just a couple of questions. One, with regards to the bedroom use of the loft. We had some suggestions. I can understand having a bathroom upstairs. Whoever's up there watching TV, if it's kids playing games or whatever, it's more convenient to have a toilet and sink there. Can we require that the shower not be installed as a way of further stating that? Or are we pushing the limit on that?
It's really not our jurisdiction. It's Health Department.
I wasn't sure if it was possible. I just thought the question out. If not, that's fine. The only other question I have is, we had received a letter from a butter and I'm not sure if the runoff from the roof is going to make any difference. I'll, still, the footprint isn't really that different, I don't know. But I was concerned, though, about, in terms of general runoff from the site, I don't know if, is it level? Is it lower at the neighbor's side?
It's pretty level. It goes down a little bit in the back, but it's pretty level lot.
I don't know if there's anything that can be or, you know, done to, or prove anything to, to make sure that there isn't a deluge and a heavy storm type of thing that would affect the neighbor.
We are proposing a rainwater cistern under the deck area. And that's on the, the deck area is on the north side of the house. And so it would collect the runoff from the roofs toward the north side, which is the side that then goes downhill. So that would help to mitigate, you know, water flow at times of intense rain. But at the, by the time you get to the edge of the property, we're not making any changes to the elevations along the edge of the property.
Okay, so those are my only questions.
Peter?
I'm good.
Okay, I did notice you, you're very well screened to the north. There's an existing wood stockade fence for the neighbor.
Yes, I believe that is the neighbor's.
Yeah, and that's fine.
They may be behind me.
Right, and that, that gives some protection to them. That's good. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Please, come forward.
I'll try to re-
You don't have to be.
I know it's getting into your dinnertime. And you guys do an outstanding job. My sis, my name is John Zeelewin, and I'm speaking in behalf of my sister who is sitting at that, in that end chair. And she is not opposed to a neighbor trying to improve their lifestyle and their home, but she is concerned about a few issues. Some of them are small, and one of them is a little bit bigger. In regard to the small issues, yes, the runoff is a big issue in that when we have severe storms, it comes cascading down onto her property. So during construction, obviously, there should be some preventative measures, such as the straw bales that are placed near her line to divert this water or at least intercept it. I think that would be a pretty reasonable request. And there's another issue as well. Her septic system is in this area where the runoff does come, come through. So I, I don't know what the consequences with that would happen over time. But when you, when you, you know, when you raise the house and then you bring the bulldozers and it's going to be an awful lot of disturbed land. And at that, during that construction time, there should be some precautions taken. And I also would like to see, maybe the downspouts in the house should pour into a dry well. And that may help relieve it too, to some degree. I don't think that's a big deal. I think it's minor, but it, it might help. And then there's a second, totally different issue. There is an easement for electrical lines to pass from 150 Pierce Road to, I'm sorry, 150 Silver Springs Road to Pierce Road. And I know it's, it's been there for, probably since nineteen fifty, if I'm guessing. I think they had electricity then. And anyway, they, they do droop. And I contacted Eversource, and they're going to check into it. But they, they typically, what they will do when there's a construction going on is they will, they will coat those, those lines with a clad, bright orange or whatever it might be to protect them. So somebody in a bulldozer might not notice it and get snagged in there. And worse things can happen from there. So I hope that they do that. And finally, the last issue is we are going from a four hundred and fifty square foot home to a fifteen hundred plus square foot home. And it is going to be, I believe, a walkout basement in the back. Is that correct?
It's a walkup, yes.
Yeah, so it'll be, so you're gonna really, my sister's going to be seeing three stories looming over her. And I think that's kind of a, I know the fifteen percent rule, they're close to that. And I realize that is what the planning board adopted way back when. But it just seems like an awful large, voluminous home that's going in in that spot. I don't know what could be done to, you know, to shrink it visually, but it's going to be a pri, kind of a privacy thing where she, my sister's home is much lower. That, that land slopes from the Silver Springs Road. And it, it keeps sloping all the way down to Pierce Road. So I don't know what the resolution, I'm kind of a, I'm in the same, nothing against your, your design and so forth. And I, I hope you get something done. I really do. Because I think you deserve to. It's kind of hard living in a closet for, for, you know, as many years as you have. But I, I don't, I'm in Kevin's ballpark. I think sometimes his homes are just overwhelming.
Fifteen hundred square feet is really, I don't think, overwhelming.
Fifteen, yeah, but you also have-
And her house, how big is her house? Her house was the same size as mine, and she said three additions.
No, but you're-
You know, wires come down on my property.
Excuse me, excuse me. This has to go through the chair back and forth, not to each other.
It's her wires. Wires go through my property, they hang over my property.
I don't see an easement on the survey. I don't know.
I have the original paperwork on that original page, like, if anybody wants to-
But anyway, I, I think that there are some issues.
Okay.
You know, that, look, this should be looked into. I, I think that some of these issues can be resolved easily. And I don't know, it's up to the Board to decide whether you're going to, you know, approve a house that's within their, you know, their legal prerogative to build. I don't know. But I just thought I'd take the opportunity to share the thoughts with you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This Board spent a lot of time in the last couple of years tuning the bylaws. And we tuned them down. We didn't tune them up. So the houses that are getting approved today are under a set of criteria that is more restrictive than it used to be. And this was as a result of a vote at town meeting when they amended the bylaws. So while you say these regulations are producing a larger house, it's not as large as it was before the bylaw changes, I'll tell you that. And I will also opine that a fifteen hundred square foot house is not exceptionally large. There's a lot of houses in town that are way beyond that. However, you are in a small lot area. And we envisioned that small cottages are going to come in and ask for larger. That was part of the bylaw change. And we didn't feel it was appropriate to restrict it to the point where they couldn't. So, you know, our philosophy was, let's give them a chance to upgrade their houses to a level that seems appropriate. And we made that decision. And hence the, the coverages that we're talking about. So is there anybody online that would like to speak on this? I don't see anybody there. Board members?
I ask you a question. This is the rear of the house. It says open the dining room, open the kitchen. So you're not going to be able to even look out from the second story.
He's looking at drawing four. So it looks like your exposed non-structural beams are an open floor from above. Is that correct? On the left side?
Yes, that's right. The left side over to-
So that's a two, that's a two-story room from the first to the second floor?
It's one and a half story room.
One and a half.
Cathedral ceiling.
But you won't be able to look out the second story to the back.
Okay, let, let me turn you to the rear.
Because there's no floor.
Rear elevation.
Right, you can't, you can't stand on the second floor that doesn't exist.
Right. It's not really a second, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's just a projection of, yeah.
On sheet seven, the two sets of windows on either side of the chimney. You can't actually stand at those windows and look out because that's the loft space.
Two of them you can't.
Oh, yeah.
Ones to the right of the chimney, there's no floor there.
I don't blame you.
The left of the chimney, there is the floor of the loft.
Very nice.
I was just getting at the point that your rear neighbor doesn't, isn't going to be looked down from the second floor.
Not much. And at the, at the back of the lot there, there are old pine trees, which, and you know the nature of pine trees down here on the Cape. They don't give you total privacy. You can, it's just filtered. There's also a deciduous tree back there, but as you've mentioned in the meeting already, that doesn't help you in the winter. But they, there is, there's more of a sense of privacy than I think that they are perceiving there to be.
Okay.
One thing that could be considered, if that's a concern, is those, those windows on the loft space, they could be like a transom window. Sit up a little higher, still let the light in, but you wouldn't, it wouldn't be like at the height where you could look out. That might be if the Board is, if that's something that-
They are, they are already very close to the floor. The, the top of those windows are about this high off the floor because that loft space is under the sloping.
Oh, so you can't?
Yeah, I, they can't-
All right, so if you're standing in front of the window, you're already basically at, so you can't go up?
You're standing right in front of the window. Your head has already gone through the roof.
And what about the glass panels on?
Well, they have to be safety glass.
On the garage, no, on the garage.
Oh, on the garage?
I mean, is, is that another level of light that could be mitigated?
Well, the ones in the garage, if you look straight out of, of where that garage door is to the, to the storage area, that looks straight into their fence. So you can't see over their fence if you're standing, looking through those glass panels of that garage door.
Yeah.
The fence is very high and it's got a lot of greenery.
Well, I think, and I had this issue with my property. There's also, on a very dark night, how much light is coming through, even if you're not looking directly in. You know, so three layers of light is what-
And you're talking about going out.
Exactly. Going, going out, you know, and fifteen hundred is not a large area, correct? So the probability of three layers of light is high. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to mitigate one layer of light, which would reduce the impact.
The fence is so high behind me.
I understand that.
With all the green, that you can't even see two levels.
No, 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 I should, yes. You know, there's no linear line of sight. On the other hand, the volume of light that is extracted from your home that would impact another home is three layers versus potentially two. I'm just saying, I, I know, I know what this is like. And our nights are very dark, especially on those streets.
Well, you know-
Seven o'clock.
I know, we all go to bed, right?
We're in bed.
Exactly, well, tell me about it. So anyway, I was just asking about, is there an option on that garage area?
Well, you know, that's, this is a situation where landscaping could certainly play a part in mitigating light coming through there.
Sure.
Also, their sensitivity to their neighbors could certainly play a part by-
Is there a reason for a solid glass garage door?
To let light into the basement, to let light go the other way. Because the basement, you know, is a very-
Oh, they're a dark circle.
Dark, musty.
That's understandable.
Smelling.
There's also, there's a, above that door, there's a three-foot section of deck walkway.
Right.
And shades could be, bamboo shades could be put hanging there to mitigate light coming from that garage door.
Sure.
And that's pretty successful. I, I live in a Victorian house that has a wraparound porch that faces south. And we've ended up putting bamboo shades in every panel to try to get through months like this, you know, and last month with this incredible heat because we don't want the sun coming in. But it does give you the flexibility in the winter to, you know, raise up the shades.
Right.
Yeah.
Just a note to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you describe that drainage system that you're going to put below the deck on the north side of the rear, north side of the house?
Well, I'll describe it as best I know it so far because it has not been engineered. But the thought was that, given, given the fact that there are times that, that the Cape is very, very dry in dry seasons, it would be beneficial to, instead of just letting all the, the rainwater wash away, if we could store some of it in a cistern to be used for irrigation purposes when it was needed. It's similar, it's kind of like a huge rain barrel, but it would be under the deck, buried in the ground.
Because I'm going to propose a condition on that. So I think I've got it. Okay. Board members, any other concerns? Anything else you want to see before approval? Brian?
I'm happy with it.
Michelle? Dave?
I'm okay.
Kevin?
No concerns.
Peter?
I'm good.
Okay.
So I have a question. Do you want to have the site, a revised site plan for the driveway issues and any other issues?
Honestly, this is such a minor traffic road. I don't see a reason to-
There's like no cars, no cars on the road, even in the summertime.
I don't see a reason to require a modification, other than a condition.
It's an awesome area, it's so quiet.
I know, I was there.
You were?
Right.
She's my neighbor.
I hear you, I saw the sign.
It's not working, but we're fine. And if you go any faster than ten, the children around, they're screaming.
No, we know that.
And your car gets very dusty.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
It's an awesome area. We love it.
I am ready to proceed. So we have the following proposed findings of fact for case number PB 2024-09. Number one, property is located at 150 Silver Spring Beach Road. Shown on map four, parcel 489, and is located in District A. These are not standard, right, Paul? We can't just refer to them?
These are all standard.
Okay, so is there- Okay, so is there, so the following findings of fact, numbers.
It's amended, I mean, it's our normal findings.
Right.
They're not, they're always different case by case, the supporting information.
But I can refer to the way it's written in your memo.
Could, yes.
Okay, so why don't I modify that? For case number, starting over, for case number PB 2024-09, is there a motion to adopt the findings of facts as written in the Paul Lag memo dated July 10, 2024? Can I do that?
I would say one through nine. Number 10, you would want to note that we did receive one letter of concern from an abutter regarding.
All right, then why don't we?
Any issues in one abutter appeared at the meeting with concerns about.
Okay, so why don't we adopt items number one through nine? And then for number 10, the planning board did receive a letter from an abutter speaking of concerns in, for the application. And one abutter attended the planning board meeting also expressing concerns.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Sorry, just to confirm, who made the motion at second?
I made the motion.
And he seconded?
Dave seconded, Peter.
Okay.
Hobson Weston.
Sorry to do this, just noticing, number nine, we had, I had anticipated you would want a revised site plan. So, if we, on finding number nine, you would strike the italicized.
It does not.
Fine, no, just the condition. So, we should probably do this again, then? What do you want to do? Or modify it? We shouldn't modify it, should we?
I would just say, adopt the findings as stated. Adopt number, how we do this? Adopt findings number one through eight as written in the staff report. And finding number nine, striking.
Everything after ways.
Everything after ways.
And number 10, so let's do a new motion because it's too confusing. I don't really feel comfortable. Is there a motion to adopt the findings of facts for case number PB 2024-09 with conditions one through eight as written? Number nine, condition, striking everything past the notation two adjacent ways. And number 10, one letter was received concerning this project. And a abutter was here to give testimony to the application.
The same person that was here that wrote the letter was the one that.
That's okay.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Second. You did it again. Good. All in favor? Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I know. Now, we're going to go to, is there a motion to approve residential site plan approval for PB 2024-09? Subject to standard conditions written in the memo through number 11. And number 12?
Through number 10.
10.
Number 10.
Okay. All right. Fine. Through number 10, with the addition of number 11, the roof drainage will be directed to a proposed cistern located beneath the proposed rear deck. Anybody want to make that? I'll make it. So, we're doing site plan approval, subject to conditions one through 10, plus the addition of number 11, which is the roof drainage will be directed to a proposed cistern system located beneath the proposed rear deck.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now you're done.
Oh, my goodness. I'm so happy.
Enjoy your new house.
I just want to.
I've been waiting so long.
This won't affect anything, but just for the abutters, part of the construction requirement for the site is that you have to contain the sediment in the runoff during construction with hay bales.
Oh, for standard erosion control.
But that's, that's required for standard construction. That was something they were concerned with.
So, the abutter, just so you're aware, one of our conditions is that they have to contain the erosion on their site as part of their approval. Just so you're aware of it. Okay?
Right.
And the bamboo shade might be nice.
Bamboo shade.
Bamboo shade.
All right. We have minutes?
Yep, one minute.
Okay, board members, we have minutes from the Eastham Planning Board of June 26, 2024. Any corrections, alterations, or changes?
I do. My name is spelled wrong. That's a first, I have to say. Usually I get a D or something else, but it's V, not Z, in my name.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. So, you've got that, Angie? Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 26, 2024, subject to the change in the spelling of the name as requested?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anything else?
Yep.
What else we got? Oh, we have to reorganize. So, we have three people that we have to decide who's going to be chairman, who's going to be vice chair, and who's going to be clerk.
Who was clerk?
What's the clerk?
Clerk was Craig Knight. So.
It's largely ceremonial.
I know. You really don't have to worry about this too much. So, anybody want to speak about volunteering for some of this stuff? No?
I have been vice chair for a couple of years, I think. And if somebody else wants to take that position, I will relinquish that. But I will also continue on if nobody wants to.
I nominate.
You think you're doing a hell of a job.
I nominate Dave Hobson to be vice chair.
Okay, Dave.
Now, we got to do chair.
I nominate Dan Copeland.
All right. Now, who would love to be clerk?
What does that mean? What do you have to do?
We really don't.
Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on. Just want to get this. Who moved for?
I moved for Dave.
I move for Dan.
For vice chair?
Yeah.
Right. Michelle moved for me.
Dana's chair, second?
Weston.
Weston, okay.
Okay. Now, we need a clerk.
But the clerk really doesn't do anything.
Right.
I'll do that, Charlie.
All right, how about? So, I will nominate.
In dire circumstances, you may be called upon, but it's pretty much taken care of.
I'll nominate Michelle to be clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
I like that title.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
All in favor of all the nominations? Vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
That'll do.
One more.
Oh.
Don't we have to, because I'm a member of the CPA for the planning board?
CPC, you mean?
I'm, yeah.
Okay. Dave and I are on CPC. I am a member at large. Dave is the representative to the CPC from the planning board. I would nominate Dave to be the CPC representative from the planning board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I vote for myself?
Yeah.
Yes.
Another thing, so just a quick update. The work on the zoning amendments for the Northeastham Commercial District is continuing on. The zoning task force is, I'm working with that group. The task force will start meeting again in September. So, over the next few weeks, we're trying to fine tune the draft of the bylaw, get it back to the task force in September. And then in the fall, through the winter, this all has to lead up to next May, 2025, town meeting. And between September and then, we will be meeting with regulatory boards, obviously, planning board, this kind of has to all filter through the planning board. So, we'll be getting back to you and the zoning board with updates. And we're going to have to have some workshops and discussion items through the fall and next winter to go through this. Kevin is your representative on the zoning task force. So, he's in the trenches with me doing all this stuff. And so, just a preview of things coming up. It will be, will be some extra work.
Right.
Coming up. And the other thing I wanted to mention was August, we'll see how the agenda shapes up. We don't know, the deadline is not yet. We know we have, next month, we know we have the continuance for schoolhouse. We don't have any new filings yet, but the deadline isn't here yet. I do want to schedule in a quick update on the strategic plan, five-year strategic plan, because we're updating that as well. Michelle is also on the strategic plan committee, so we have good coverage as far as membership. But I will schedule either September, August or September, an update so you just understand what the strategic plan status is and how that plays into everything else going on. Because that does interconnect with Northeastham, tee time, the zoning for Northeastham Route 6, everything, so I'll schedule that.
Climate change.
Do we have an open board seat now? Or do we just have an open alternate seat?
So, technically, technically, right now, there's two vacancies for alternate alternates.
So, Michelle, in record time, like one month, has gone from alternate to main member.
I know, right? How did that happen? And clerk.
And clerk.
You didn't tell me. Yeah, I know. That's what I'm most proud of. I'm most proud of the clerk designation.
I don't blame you. It's very important.
Now, you need new letterhead and everything.
I know, I'm going to put a bumper sticker on my.
A few housekeeping, I guess this could be other business. I did give you an updated 25, which you approved last month. You gave staff.
25 court.
Oh, yeah.
Just to let you know, they did submit an updated.
And it's, it's conforming to our requirements?
It does.
We don't have to take any action, though, do we?
And another thing is, any materials you want to give to me to recycle or your envelope? I would love to reuse those.
Oh, I'll bring them from last year.
Not holding on to them. And then anyone, I guess, moving forward, who would be willing to be digital? Paul didn't know I was going to say this, but I just feel like.
Go for it.
If, if anyone is willing to not have all the printed paper, we can start moving in that direction.
Should we keep them on for schoolhouse?
Yes.
Yeah, they're coming back.
I'm giving up the Silver Spring. Thank you very much, Angie. All right.
Dan, I'm not sure you officially adjourned.
No, we haven't yet. Okay. Not to be a party pooper, but is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.